This is the Orlando Sentinel interview with the candidates for Orange County Commission, District Six. There are four candidates with us today, and we will have an additional three candidates with us this afternoon. So there will be two separate interviews for this race. And today, because of some scheduling conflicts, I am holding down the fort by myself. I'm the Orlando Sentinel's opinion editor, Chris Booker. And with us today, we have Ms. Heather Pierre-Joseph, Roberta Walton Johnson. Or is it, did you prefer Roberta or Dylan?
Roberta Walton Johnson, that's my name.
Okay, Cynthia Harris, and Luana Gelsar. All right. Now, we are going to take about 45 minutes to an hour, and I'm going to go through some questions. And we are, I'm going to start off with a question about what happened last week where the county commission advanced an ordinance that will possibly make some changes in renters protections, including definitely a notice period before rent is raised or there is eviction, and also a possible ballot question that would put a one-year cap on rate increases for rent. I'd like each of you to take a minute and tell me what you think, what you think of those measures, if you think that they are sufficient, if you think they are overboard. And let's start with Ms. Pierre-Joseph.
Good morning. So the initiative that passed, passed in regards to renters getting notice, I think it's insufficient, but it's also in a, it's going in a good place. And I'm glad that it covered the month-to-month tenancy, because the issue with that is that a lot of these tenants have been in their homes for 10 years, five years. So the 60-day notice that, the notice for that is great. However, one issue that was in oversight was affordable housing. So you currently have affordable housing units run by the federal government, and not only are they increasing rents, they're increasing rents in the middle of their leases. And for example, the one in the district would be Silver Ridge, that's located on Hiawassee. And for me, it's not understanding the issues, the citizens who are directly impacted, not having the voice in order to speak. And I so, I know there needs to be improvement, because what happens, I don't know how much more minutes I have. So what happens is that staff does it, staff presents it to the board, and there, there's an opportunity for the regular people. And I keep, and I'll continue to say this, the majority of, 30% of District Six lives in poverty. So people, and they call them working families, they're not working families, they're working poor. They're actually at work when we're holding these meetings, and they are not given the opportunity to be heard. And what I would do differently, we have to go to the community. So some of those individuals who are sitting in the chamber at any given time, they're paid, they're actors, they're actually paid. So for me, it's going in the right direction, but it's not covering everyone, nor is it covering those in lodging and other issues. The second thing is moving in the right direction in regards to the rent stabilization for next year. That's going to happen next month. And so that was not discussed now in order to be on the ballot. And so my only concern is that you have to get, you have to hear from all this constituency. Thank you.
All right, let's go to Ms. Walton Johnson.
Yes. So first of all, I do want to applaud the current city members on the Board of County Commissioners for having this discussion, because it is one that is well-known in the community. People are truly struggling when it comes to affordable rent right now. My concern with some of the language that's currently being proposed, which I think was the question, is this is being called rent stabilization ordinance. I don't see this as a rent stabilization measure. I see this as a rent cap measure, of which I foresee more unintended consequences down the future. Right now, when you start talking about notice, you're talking about specific elements of the Florida statute, of which Orange County Government and the Orange County Board of County Commissioners may not preempt. They may not put into place any measure that's stronger. They could do something more lenient, but they cannot do anything stronger, because otherwise, they're preempting a state statute. So while, again, I applaud the discussion, I just really want us to concentrate and focus on something that is more amenable, more, and that's going to provide us with more of a long-term solution towards affordability here in our community. Rent stabilization measures include putting in some programs where we can actually stabilize the market. That's going to mean increasing some development, making sure we have the right portion of housing stock. The unintended consequences that we're going to see from this is people are going to receive notices right now, before any ballot measure takes place, and they're going to be asked to leave so that we see an astronomical rent hike. And that's going to hurt our community. And so I just want us to look at this from all perspectives, and I don't think that the current language does that. Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Yes, but I'm in agreement with some of the things that were said. I agree that this is a setup for renters who are wanting some help. We're, right now, our community is hurting with the prices of gas, food costs, and the talks of building affordable housing. What is affordable housing when you're making minimum wage? So as far as the 60-day notice for a 5% increase, I think if you're going to give notice, I think it should be increased to 90 days, because 60 days is just simply not enough to give someone notice. And as Ms. Walton stated, you're going to start seeing people being evicted. We saw this during the pandemic. There was a moratorium that said that they weren't going to evict people, but we know in Orange County, a lot of people were being evicted from their homes, even with the moratorium in place. And that's not, that's not right, and it's not fair to people who are struggling. Also, when you're talking about relieving people of their struggles when it comes to rent, Orange County owns 5,118 properties that they could sell to working-class people and hold a note, because they're in the real estate business, otherwise they wouldn't have obtained this property in the first place. You have 13 municipalities in Orange County. The city of Orlando has 1,178 properties, respectively. So if they alleviate some of their inventory, that could help assist people who are needing the help in this community. But the language is flawed, is very flawed, and I don't think that there, I think it's a stall tactic so that they can not really address the issues that are really affecting the people in this community. So when you're talking about this rent cap, I really hope that they get it together, have some more meetings before they put an initiative on the ballot.
All right, Ms. Gelsar.
Well, hello, everybody. Thank you for the question. I'll just get, dive right in it. A lot of the things have already been said. However, my concern is, it's a bad name. It's something that we have not looked at thoroughly, and it's been affecting a lot of communities disproportionately, especially those in District Six. So this is a national issue. So we need to understand this is not just here in Orange County. However, Orange County, especially the city of Orlando, is now known as the city of vacancies. So the increases of rents, the increases of even of interest rate, we had a lot of money, PP money, we had a lot of things that we did not do what other communities and counties did. We only provided rent stabilization, not like Seminole County, with housing mortgages. We could have done both. You set the rules, and now you're beginning to feel the effects of what has happened. For an example, Amelia Court, federal-funded apartments, yet they put cable and all kinds of things in individuals' rents in their lease, and that's supposed to be separated. There's currently a lawsuit where Natalie Jackson and other, Attorney Jackson, has filed with individuals there. So I am saying 60 days is nice, but I must agree with everybody at this point, it's rhetoric, it's a good step in the right direction. I believe that we should have been a little bit more proactive in our decision-making and not more reactive of people coming down to talk about stuff. I've always said we have to get away from the typical housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, I've mentioned the tiny homes, I've mentioned the modular homes. We've heard about the inventory stock on property. At this time, at the same time, why can they have put a plan in to help individuals? So I honestly think come November or before, there will be a rent increase on a lot of people, and the people that they think it's going to help, it's going to even hurt them more. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next question I wanted to ask has to do with one of the avenues to expand the inventory of affordable housing, has been identified as infill and reuse of existing properties. Where do you think Orange County has opportunities? And the county's own properties have already been mentioned as well. Where do you think Orange County has opportunities to encourage reuse, redevelopment, and more, of more affordable housing? And let's start with Ms. Harris.
Yes, thank you for that question. As I stated earlier, Orange County has 5,118 properties in their inventory that they can release to the public. They don't have to hold on to them. And also, because they are in the real estate business, they can hold the mortgage. There's down payment assistance programs, as well as other tax credits that they can do. It's not that they can't do it, they won't do it. They have done it before. The last property that Orange County released to the public was in 2014, and they sold that house for $20,000. So they can sell properties to the public that they have in inventory for working-class people that simply can afford a $100,000 home or $300,000 home. They can do it for less money and increase revenue within the county, because, again, they can be the mortgage holders. It has been done. And so can the municipalities within the realms of Orange County. So then you have these other properties that are distressed, and Orange County is planning on doing an affordable housing complex right off of Orange Blossom Trail. They can make that affordable, they can make sure that people who are working class are in those properties. Also, with code enforcement, when you have these transitional housing programs, there has to be a checks and balance system in there. We no longer can ask developers to do affordable housing anymore. But the ones that are already in existence, they should be held accountable to make sure that those units that are slated for affordable housing are slated just the same properly.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to Ms. Walton Johnson.
Yes. So thank you for the question. And I believe your question really was about some other opportunities to enhance the current amount of housing that we have available that is actually affordable. And I think that is really the key question, affordability, because there is lots of programs right now that to incentivize affordable housing, as was stated previously at the state and the federal level. However, many people who live and reside, and I won't even just exclude this to District Six, many people who are living here in Orange County don't find that to be affordable. And those are the people who get up and go to work each and every day. So from my perspective, I think when you start talking about infill development and redevelopment, that means you're talking about areas where District Six is. That means you have dark buildings. That means you have vacant buildings along our stretch, and you go in and you see if we can acquire those properties as the county, as the agency, and establish some type of public-private partnership with the private. I don't agree that the county should be in the real estate business. I think we should be the agents of change, quite frankly. And so we establish these public-private partnerships, because there are groups out there willing to do that. And we provide land grants. And if we do have inventory on stock, we share that with private entrepreneurs or small business owners to go in, redevelop these homes in exchange for making them affordable to the general public. We did that through our Neighborhood Stabilization Program back in 2008 and 2009, during the foreclosure crisis, where we pulled together a group of GCs, small business owners, throughout the organization, and we literally start assigning them different units for them to go in and rehabilitate. I think that's the way we increase our infill.
Okay, Ms. Gelsar.
I will start off by saying accountability, accountability, accountability. I've heard it, we've had task force, we've had experts sitting on task force. A lot of times, those individuals are not the people that will be receiving the benefits of their decision. We can expand and do everything, but let's just start with changing some of the ordinance that are in place, so we can have modular homes, so we can have a tiny home program. We can look at the hotels, changing them into one bedrooms. But I'm very concerned, because I reside, like another candidate, in the city of Orlando, and I've heard it, I've seen it. And if you don't check behind what is going on, you will find out your best intentions has hurt the community more than helped the community. I live within a community of Paramore now, where 88 properties were purchased from what we call one of the slum lords. And $2 million were given to this agency to revamp the properties and bring them up to code. I'm not happy, they paid over the price, and we helped them, and it still looks about the same. So that's why I started off by accountability, accountability. If there's not strong measures to hold all of these programs in place and accountable, we can keep going around and around the circle, but the people who are here to serve will not receive the services. I don't want to see revitalization equals gentrification. And that's what's happening currently in Paramore and other communities. And so since I say I'm living through it, I am living through it. I am next to seven properties that receive all kinds of funding, and they look worse than ever. And I am a taxpayer, didn't feel that if all their code enforcement will waive everything. So what I'm saying is, if we're going to expand it, we have to have tough teeth to hold them accountable. And if we don't, it sounds good, but it's rhetoric, and the people that we want to help will be displaced even more. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Pierre-Joseph.
Okay. First and foremost, affordable housing does not work. Affordable housing is based on the federal, the poverty guidelines. And so what happens is that if I make, let's say, $50,000, and rents currently in Orlando is $2,000, I wouldn't qualify for any affordable housing. Our teachers don't qualify for affordable housing. The initiative that we need to be discussing is sustainable housing. This is how sustainable housing looks. Sustainable housing says, I'm going to use an example, if I make $15, then my rent or 30% of my income goes toward my mortgage. This is what works. And so this is what we need. We need mixed use. We're giving public funds to private entities without any oversight. Affordable housing program does not work. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program is a HUD program. It was created by, on the federal level, it changed the, it allowed, it gave grants to the states to give to the counties and the cities. That was not a county initiative. We don't have, we have not had strong county initiatives in the past two decades to deal with affordable housing. And so I want us to understand the concept. It is not, when our teachers, who are just now got a raise to make $48,000, cannot afford to work here. Affordable housing does not work. Sustainable housing in the developers, there isn't any community oversight. We have a history in Orange County of giving millions and millions of dollars to developers, okay, I'm going to choose, that support some of these candidates, and then once they do that, they don't go back and hold them accountable. There is a project that was built with money, as with tax breaks, tax incentives, but there isn't any oversight. There isn't any oversight. The affordable housing does not work. What we need currently is the oversight is sustainable. We need new leadership that shows initiatives. We have condo conversions, we have hotel conversions, we have so many things that can be done. But I want to reiterate that Orange County has not done, well, let's show, Orange County Neighborhood Stabilization Program was a federally funded program, and there wasn't much that the county has done in the last 20 years to make sure that people can live in Orange County.
Thank you so much. Those were great answers. I am, one of the big elements that's been identified in improving the amount of affordable housing and to keep, to kind of direct the development down, sorry, is to restrict development in fairly rural areas. And that really is up to the county to push development in toward the cities. Do you think that the county has proper controls on growth patterns that would encourage more infill development, more rural, I mean, more urban development, less rural development? And let's start with Ms. Gelsar.
I'm so sorry. Is the question to talk about growth patterns into urban communities?
Yeah. How, what, how, what should the county be doing to disincentivize sprawl into vacant land that's far from services, far from everything, and encourage, encourage more urban redevelopment and tighter development patterns that keep people close to services and jobs?
Well, thank you for the question and clarification. Let me just be honest and say District Six is the urban community. And so therefore, what you're saying is, you're coming in our community that has been lacking in services to do increased development. And so when you do increased development, you bring additional roles, you bring additional things, you don't, you're supposed to bring additional transportation, public services, and a whole lot of things. So at this point, we have been saturated with so much urban development, but we did not get the protective measures in our community to protect the community. That's why we are in food deserts, health disparity communities. I can go on, you got the growth management plan, but you don't go back and look at your own data when it comes to emissions of gas from cars and communities and the health disparities. So I don't have a problem with people not moving to the suburbs. I have a problem with if you're going to come and concentrate it into the district. We still have people in, on septic tanks in this district. We have environmental issues that's going on in District Six that they've known for years, and the funding should have been allocated prior to now. So if you're going to bring more, you have not eradicated the issues that is affecting the community as of now. The district is suffering right now. So if you do that, I think currently you don't have any accountability measures, and so it's going to hurt the district even more.
Okay, well, I guess we'll try Ms. Walton Johnson.
Yes. So I think right now, what's happening is you always see the push to try to develop more rurally in the open green space, because it's cheaper. It's a lot cheaper to go build on open green space than it is to come in and tear up asphalt and concrete and knock down buildings in the infill urban area. However, I do actually agree with Ms. Gelsar that we have an infrastructure problem in our urban area, in our urban corridors, especially over in a large part of District Six, which, and District Two, which incorporates the Pine Hills area. Much of that area is still on septic. A lot of what we consider the urban service corridor here have infrastructure issues. We have a lot of our utilities right in the right-of-way, which makes it very difficult and costly to do the infill development. So I propose, A, we go back and we look at our code. I, it's beyond time to look at the Orange County code and to address some of those ordinances that prohibit us from smart growth, and doing that smart growth within the urban corridor. We need to identify the areas where we can, where it's feasible. We need to identify the areas that need a complete reset in terms of infrastructure in our right-of-ways. We have some flooding going on in Orla Vista. So for me, that is an opportunity to expose the sprawl and to, and to correct two things, affordability and growth.
Thank you. And Ms. Pierre-Joseph.
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
It's kind of warped. Sorry. Originally, the question was, how can, what growth policy should the county adopt to discourage sprawl and encourage urban and infill development, redevelopment? However, it, I think the other two candidates have made the point that some of those, some of those areas are not ready for redevelopment. So that has become the question, is a pretty good one.
Okay, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure. So with the infill versus the rural development, the county does not have a plan for development anywhere. What happens, and I have to explain it in layman's terms. What happens is that the developers come with their ideas, and they get the county to buy in. So what I propose is that the county has a development program. Whether you're developing a rural area, you're still going to have those septic issues. So it is poor planning on the county's part. So we have to change the vision. The county needs to have a plan, because even if you're developing a rural area, a developer buys a plot of land, decides on what to do, and that's, so smart growth or smart development means planning. And so our planning department needs to be re-divided. So that's what I propose. And I'm going to say, the county has no, the county does not have a plan for rural areas. So what's going to happen 20 years down the line, as the rural areas are more developed, we're going to run into the same issues. Now, what's happened in our urban areas is based on the lack of our elected officials being dedicated. We knew 20 years ago that we were on septic tank. Where is the plan? The issue is that the county has no plan. And so when you talk about infrastructure, so what I want to do on the federal level is that the federal never, I don't care how much money it costs, you need to start developing in the areas that have been systematically disadvantaged and that you have overlooked. Because what happens is that whenever the county plans to do a development, they find the funds. So this only applies to District Six. And so what I'm saying right now, District Six, the county has no plans for you. But when the county is ready to develop into gentrify, then they have a plan. So what we need to do right now, need leaders that have a plan on growth and not gentrification, revitalization for the citizens. revitalization for the citizens.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Harris.
I think most thing pretty much has been said. So when you're talking about control of growth patterns, i- in District Six, it's called gentrification. What they do is they place things in our community that no one wants. Uh, uh, they have all the shelters, they devalue the properties. And then they say, oh, well, we wanna make things better, or that, that you got people that, as I said earlier, the buy-in, we need shelters. We don't need shelters, our people need housing, we need better transportation. When I was a kid, buses broke down and they were running every, and their speed broke down and they run every hour. So there's no plan to make sure that we have adequate growth in our community. We, uh, we give incentives for these developers to come in, but what do they put in there? They put in the worst things in our community. They put these box stores like Family Dollar and Dollar General, but no grocery stores. They put in, they put in other entities like fast food restaurants, but nothing healthy, no other alternatives. There's no grocery stores that are willing to even come into our community and make sure that our community is not a food desert. So we have to travel three to five miles out of our community just to get the essential amenities, just so that we could be sustainable in our community. So as the other ladies have said already, there is no plan for us itself to continue our demise in this community. Until we, the people, decide that we're tired of this, and this is why I think all of us ladies are running, is we're sick and tired of the things that are happening. Because we've been fighting for these things fifty-plus years, and we're still fighting for them. And we shouldn't have to continue fighting for things that we already deserve.
Thank you so much. I think that might turn out to be one of the best questions I didn't ask. Because I thought that was a great set of answers. Thank you very much. Um, and you mentioned, um, transportation. Well, as we know, um, on the November ballot will be a one-cent sales tax referendum that is, um, half of which is promised to go to public transit, the other half to improving, expanding, modernizing roads. Do you support this? Um, and why or why not? And let's start with Ms., um, Pierre Joseph.
Yes, I, I do support it. However, during canvassing, the residents, the voters in District Six, they don't support it. Number one, the timing is wrong. Number two, the, the, so a- as, as an elected official, it's important for me to remove myself from the equation. I have one vote. So when Header Pierre Joseph speaks, I don't speak based on what I want. I speak based upon what the voters have told me they wanted. They do not want it. Um, there's been a disregard for transportation. We don't even have bus shelters in our district, in District Six. So the residents, so I'm speaking on behalf of the voters, they don't trust the government or they don't trust the county with the accountability because they have not done anything to them. Secondly, there is not a project currently for District Six. District Six can look into District Two and see that. And so what the residents are saying, they're not happy about it. You have excluded them and they're not pleased with it. Do we need transportation? Absolutely. Some of the issues with the transportation, look at some of the other models in North Carolina and South Carolina. What happens is that the federal government in the sixty-nine billion dollar transportation initiative that's been passed, you not only, you're gonna have to develop shelters, and you're gonna have to develop homes around the transportation. So around whatever these hubs are, and it's not going to be buses, it, it can't be buses. So it's gonna have to be high roads, high-speed rail. And what's happened is that gentrification has occurred. So we need to be smart. And we need to also take into account, how do we do this building? And we be honest and upfront and transparent with the voters, letting them know what plans we have and bringing developers that are gonna create sustainable housing. But as it stands right now, if I were to, it's going to be on the ballot, but the voters of District Six have said they are not in favor and a majority, although the county says eighty, eighty-six percent. There were thirteen people in the room at Barnett Park that day, so I was there. There weren't a lot of people, the meeting was held at, in the evening. So a lot of the residents did not even have an opportunity to voice where they stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Gelsner.
Um, currently, I've read the plan, some people says a hundred and fifteen pages, some say a hundred and thirty. It does not matter, District Six was not included in the plan where a, a jo- a vast, um, amount of individuals utilize public transportation. I've said it before, others might say, Orange County School Board has more buses on the road than Lynx do for servicing three counties. That's, that's ridiculous. But suggestions have been made, but they, um, they, but they wanted to direct this cut, they fell on the floor. We suggested a four-on-eight east-to-west, um, mon- uh, speed tray, uh, monorail train to travel east-to-west on the four-on-eight because it's already established blueprint. We s- suggested, um, because of the heat. Uh, if you have bus shelters, make them solar, living walls, uh, make them, um, have fans because of the heat index. Uh, those suggestions were made, but yet they did not make it to the plan. So, um, just recently, I reached out to the Orange County School Board to tell them about five-hundred-million-dollar grant for clean buses, school buses. Uh, hopefully, they'll get back with me. As county commissioner, it wouldn't have been reaching out to them, it would have been, this is what we need to do to service our community. I just wrote a grant yesterday to do a pilot program where we take a couple of bus stops and turn them into living walls and, and have solar power so people will be able to utilize that and have cooling mechanisms while they're waiting for the bus. All of this stuff should be in the plan, but the plan itself covers a bad decision of covering Sun Rail, which travels north to south, and is paying for the other two counties that they don't have to pay. So once again, the county that needs, the district that needs it the most was the district that went without. They received nothing. And suggestions were made and they did not make it in the plan. So that's poor leadership, and that's why I am running for county commissioner. Because these suggestions were made and the funding is there to get it. None, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Harris.
Okay. Um, thi- this has really been a hot topic, subject about transportation. And, uh, as was stated by Ms. Pierre, when talking to voters, they're not in agreement because people are hurting right now. Pe- uh, the cost of gas has gone up if you have a car. If you, uh, you gotta eat every day. You, so your food prices are going up, rent is going up. And I don't agree with municipalities, eleven out of thirteen municipalities, eleven of them receiving a ten percent kickback out of this sales tax. They should be putting into the pot instead of taking away from the pot. That's number one. Uh, Lynx received, uh, last May, fifty million in CAD money. What did they do with that money? They just received three-hundred-thousand dollars from the FTC. That's dedicated to Cimarron. I don't live in, uh, Cimarron, I don't live in that district. So it, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't help the people that are in District Six. The language i- in, in this, this proposed sales tax, it, it doesn't, it doesn't help us, it hurts us. What's designed to allegedly help us is hurting the people that they're saying they want to help. No family should be using public transportation and spending three to five hours on a bus just to get to work. And that takes away from their family time, it takes away from quality time that they could be spending elsewhere. And then on top of that, they have to go to work and spend eight hours on a job to be abused possibly or not be abused. So no, I'm not in agreement with it, the people are not in agreement with it, it's bad timing, people are hurting. And we need to just not, not even consider this sales tax.
Ms. Walton Johnson.
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, this is a, a very popular topic. To respond to your initial question, yes, I do support the effort. I think, um, that it is time for our area to, um, push for a dedicated transportation, um, funding source because we are no longer a town. We are a metropolitan hub receiving more than a thousand people a week. And we need to diversify how we move people in this area. It, you know, I, I do understand, um, the dynamics behind the split that was decided by the current board, forty-five, forty-five, and ten. I, I, I probably, I don't particularly agree with how they came up with, uh, the equity in how they, they're going to split the funding. But I do agree that this is the foundation. This is the base. This gets us started. We're talking about a more than forty-year discussion that we've been having around acquiring a dedicated funding source here in the central Florida area. And we finally got to this point to move it all the way to the ballot. Now it's up to the people. And so, yes, the county has done a poll, and the data says that the people in District Six support it. Now it's time for us to actually see what the ballot says. Because every individual here in, in Orange County will have an opportunity to vote their voice. From me and my standpoint, I think that there's opportunities to increase the frequency and access, uh, uh, direct access routes for Lynx, for the people of District Six, to diversify how we move them and how often we move them. I think it's an opportunity to discuss, um, an east-west, uh, corridor for Sun Rail and additional multimodal stations, which will include bus shelters in the District Six area. But we gotta start somewhere. And I believe this is exactly what this is. It's a base, a foundational discussion to get us started, to leverage the us in the, in Orange County, not just a small of a, a portion of us, but all of us. Because I've watched us lose a lot of dedicated executives in trans- in the transportation area because they could not be effective because we didn't have a dedicated funding source. We knew Sun Rail, uh, the, uh, Florida DOT was going to turn Sun Rail over to us. And now it's up to us to make it a more effective, uh, transportation, uh, model for us. We gotta diversify how we move people.
Thank you. Well, I have a bunch more questions that we have come to right about an hour. And, um, with, um, with some time left for closing statements. And, um, so what I'd like to do then is to, um, ask each of you to kind of make your, your, um, elevator pitch for, um, for choosing you to represent, um, District Six on the county commission. Um, and let's start with, um, Ms. Pierre Joseph.
Thank you. Well, what I want to say to the voters in District Six, that my name is Header Pierre Joseph. I am an immigrant, I am a businesswoman, I am a mom, I have lived in District Six. I want to be that voice for you. I want to be, not to go along with the consensus, not to go along with what everyone else is saying, but to truly listen to you, to hear what you have to say, and to bring your perspective into the county chamber. And another thing I want you to, to, I want the, um, the voters of District Six to ask yourself, there have been so many promises. Who has been making these promises to you? Header Pierre Joseph has never made a promise to you. I have worked in my life to come extraordinary obstacles, and I am determined to fight for the next generation in District Six and to make sure that you have a voice. So therefore, I'm asking for your support as your next county commissioner for District Six. Thank you.
All right, let's go to Ms. Gelsner.
Well, hello, everybody. My name is Lawanna Gelsner, and I'm a candidate for District Six County Commission. Simple, I always say I'm one of the most civic-engaging individuals you will ever meet. But the bottom line is I've been working in the community for thirty years because I care and because I know that if you do the work, people will understand you, it, it's important to be there and be seen. I don't just show up, I've been there, I'm not afraid to fight. I've been fighting on behalf of my community for thirty-plus years. But the simple fact is, I know how to bring additional funding to the district, and I have said it, and I'm doing it currently right now. I'm the only candidate who's funded by three federal agencies and looking to get additional funding as we speak. That's the EPA with the environmental issue, that's HERSA, and that's the CDC. Um, the simple fact is, we cannot always just rely on individuals who say what they're going to do and make promises. I'm not making promises. I am getting the work done. I recently got funded, the only, um, resilient hub, permanent resilient hub in Orange County that is renamed after my mom, Ms. Betty, um, Gelsner, um, Resilient and Learning Center. We have to talk about green technology, we have to talk about climate, we have to talk about all kinds of things that are affecting our district. But the most important thing is, you gotta have someone that's there going to fight for you and not be the establishment to go along with it. Because I'm there to represent the community, you. And if I can't do that, then you'll say, hmm. But the bottom line is, Lawanna Gelsner has been doing the job and standing on behalf of those who don't have the voice. I give you the voice as city, as the county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Harris?
Yes, I'm Cynthia Harris, and I am your candidate for Orange County Commissioner for District Six. We've had too many people that have made false promises for decades, and we're still fighting for the things that we should already have. We should have better housing, we should have better transportation, we should have better pay. And I'm that candidate that's going to continue to fight. I've been fighting in the trenches for quite some time. Uh, I brought seven million dollars into my community, and I did it without the assistance of government funding. So it can be done, people say you can't fight City Hall. We fought City Hall and we have won. We fought against the county for different things that have been a detrimental impact in our community, and we have won. I am that candidate who has been out there fighting for you regardless of being in the seat or not. I want to continue to fight for you in the seat and be your voice, be the voice of the voiceless because we've had too many people that have, have given these rhetoric promises and have given these campaign stump speeches, and they have not done what they say they're going to do. I have done it, I am currently still doing it. And I am that person that will continue to work hard and speak for you. If you want a candidate that's a part of the establishment and you want the same-o, same-o, then you're gonna to, you're gonna vote for someone else. But if you vote for Cynthia Harris, you're gonna have someone that's gonna be your voice and be the person that stands with you and for you, not in front and not give you information at the end of the day. Thank you.
Ms. Walton Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, my name is Roberto Walton Johnson, and I am running to be your next Orange County Commissioner for District Six. I have dedicated my entire career and much of my life to public service, and I am ready to carry the vision forward for the residents of District Six. I am an inaugural graduate of the Florida A&amp;M College of Law. And when, after I passed the bar and, uh, became licensed to practice, I went to work for Community Legal Services of Mid-Florida to serve as a, uh, bene- public benefits attorney. On behalf of many of the residents, I am now looking to lead. Uh, I previously served with the county from years two thousand six to two thousand fourteen. I served as the District Six aide, but I did not stop there. I then, uh, carried over into an advocacy role while serving at Orange County Housing and Community Development on behalf of District Six. I served on the Citizens Review Panel on behalf of Orange County and the, and the residents here. And I currently serve as an at-large member, uh, that, uh, excuse me, uh, to the Bo- uh, Orange County, uh, Board of Zoning and Adjustments, where I serve as, uh, Mayor Demings' representative. I've continued to serve, and I'd like to serve you. Um, I opened up the, uh, Orange County Self-Help Center on behalf of our clerk of courts. Uh, and that self-help center is put forth to help people who are suffering out here, who need representation and cannot retain representation on their own. And I now serve as your general counsel, uh, with the Orange County Clerk of Courts. Um, we have a lot of people struggling, and I see that from day to day. And now I'm asking for your support on August twenty-third as your next Orange County Commissioner, so together, we can push this vision forward.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you all. Um, and this is gonna wrap up our, um, interview with the first group of candidates for Orange County Commission, District Six. And this is going to be on the August ballot. If no candidate, if no candidate gets, um, fifty percent plus one of the vote, um, it will proceed, the top two vote-getters will proceed to November. um, it will proceed, the top two vote-getters will proceed to November. Um, and we will um, and voters in District Six, this is restricted to voters in District Six.